So this is the Tuesday, February 16th meeting of the Corder Madera Town Council that we're calling to order. We will start with, it's not in this order on the agenda, but should we start with a roll call and a salute to the flag?
Let's, let's just start with a roll call just for, for, for speaking to the salute to the flag when the regular meeting starts, but.
Sounds good. Okay. Could we?
This will be on recording. It's good to have it start off with a roll call.
Perfect.
Um, council member Casissa.
Here.
Council member Lee. He may be late joining us, so we'll keep an eye on that. Uh, council member.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart.
Here.
Mayor Beckman.
Here. Thank you. And with that, we are going to adjourn to closed session. Uh, this is a conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation. So I believe we have Rebecca, we have a separate Zoom link that we're going to decamp to, right? And then we will come back to this Zoom link at 6:30 for the beginning of the public portion of our meeting.
We do. We have to call for public comment first though.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. So we're going to open now for public comment on our closed session item. We only have one member of the public in attendance right now. But if you'd like to comment on our closed session item, which is conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email public comment at tcmail.org. And I'll just check Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this?
We did not get any emailed public comments on the closed session.
Perfect. And our member of the public has not put their hand up. So we're going to go ahead now and adjourn to closed session and we will come back to the open portion of the meeting at 6:30.
And for the public, I am going to share a screen that says that the council is in closed session and will convene shortly.
Okay, we are going to go ahead and uh, call to order the public portion of the Tuesday, February 16th meeting of the Corder Madera Town Council. We've already had our roll call, but please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. We're going to report out of our closed session, which was a conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation. The council took no reportable action at this time. That's going to bring us to open time for public comment, and this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items that are not on our agenda. Members of the public are going to be given three minutes apiece to comment again on anything not on tonight's agenda. If you want to comment, please raise your hand via Zoom or email public comment at tcmail.org. We'll give folks a second here to raise their hands if, if anybody would like to make any comments. And Rebecca, did we receive any emails for public open time?
No, we did not receive any email from public comments.
Okay, great. And I am not seeing any hands up here from our attendees. So we'll close public comment. Moving right along, we've got two presentations tonight. The first is an update from the Marin wildfire prevention authority. The second is an update from our town manager on the work plan. If it's okay with everybody on the council, maybe we move that second presentation to the end because I know we've got a number of folks on the line who want to participate and comment on our first business item. So just uh, get to that a little quicker. Is everybody okay with that? Great. Okay. Then let us start with the update on the Marin wildfire prevention authority presentation.
A good evening and thank you, Mayor Beckman and council members. My name is Mark Brown and I have the honor and privilege of being the executive officer for Marin wildfire prevention authority newly formed JPA here in the county. A little bit about myself, I was hired by the Marin County Fire Department in 1991 and worked through the ranks and retired recently. As the deputy fire chief, so I can assume the position as the executive officer for the while of the MWPA. And over the 30 years of wildland firefighting I've done, I've seen the wildland wildfire environment change. And I know that we need to change. We need to do something different than what we've been doing. This has been obvious for quite some time. However, this last fire season really put an exclamation point on it. With the, just a tremendous lightning cease that we had four million acres burned, which is double of whatever annual acreage burned has been, which was almost a double of what it had been before that. And it really means that we have to act in a holistic and coordinated fashion to increase the safety of the residents in Marin. And I really believe the MWPA is poised to do that. Uh, we really need to work together on the fire agents, law enforcement, local government, land management agencies, our environmental stakeholders, and then I'll add what I think is the most important component. We need our community members to be actively involved in this. We need them to take responsibility for what is on their property and defensible space that they create and home hardening that they do on their property. It's really easy to focus on the mega fires. That's what we see in the news all summer long. But in reality, that's 1% of the fires that we see across the state of California. And I really believe that we need to focus on the 99% of the fires. And if we take the house out approach and each resident makes her home less ignitable, the physical home, and then they work on the um, defensible space around their home. Then we all become stronger and we become the strength of our community becomes a sum of its parts. And I'll explain why I, I believe in this philosophy. It's very easy for a three acre fire on a regular fire weather day to impact a home and potentially destroy a home faster than a fire engine can get there. And so that's why we need to focus on those fires and have these homes defend themselves when a fire hits the home faster than a fire engine can get there. And actually, we had that in Larkspur earlier this year with some of the work the central Marin fire had done along with the town fire crew. Some defensible space work that had been done, the fire ignited, impacted the defensible space and it, the home saved itself before any fire engine got there. Now, if we all do that and these large mega fires come in, then we are that much stronger because it's not this big giant fire front that comes through and destroys these homes typically. It's the ember cast. The embers start landing in and around our homes. And if those embers can land and self extinguish, then we don't get the major contributor to fire spread in the urban environment. And that's house to house spread. We really need to focus on the vegetation management projects in and around our communities. We need to improve the safety of our evacuation routes, increase the community awareness and improve our notification systems. And like I said earlier, our residents really need to be an active part of this. The voters spoke loud and clear last March. I think it was the only tax measure that passed. And it passed with a 70.8% yes vote. And so to me, those are clear marching orders that this is a priority to the residents. And they want us to be efficient and effective. And I do think that we got off to a great start. We had a very successful start with our chipper days. Fire Safe Marin was great in stepping up and managing that for us. We have increased our public education again in partnership with Fire Safe Marin. And they've actually had to increase their licenses on their accounts because they've been having so many people attend their sessions. Along the lines of improving our notification systems, we know that when cell towers go down are one of our primary vec notification tools, cell phones goes, goes along with it. So we have a pilot program with NOAA weather radios. This is a decades old tried and true VHF radio system that we know works. And so we've bought 1,000 radios and we're distributing them throughout all of our member agencies and communities. And we'll start incorporating those in our evacuation drills to see how effective they are. We're working with our local member agencies and our firewise communities for red flag signage signage so that we can increase the awareness during red flag days. And maybe you are at the end of a one-way street, very deep in a canyon, or you have access and functional needs when it's a red flag day, you may pack your go bag and have your go bag in your car ready to go. Or maybe you might just choose to go to a loved one's house that lives outside of the, the high fire danger areas. And then I think we probably all saw the, the recent evacuation report from the grand jury and articles that were in the IJ. And we've, we've taken tremendous strides prior, actually prior to the publication of the report and coordinating evacuation responses. Number one, we are under contract now with Zone Haven, which is a very dynamic and effective evacuation tool that integrates seamlessly with our existing notification systems. And I, let me, let me touch on evacuation notification systems real quick. And I, and I got a former police chief here staring at me. But I think we get so embedded in the, in the discussion of our technology ways of notifying. And people think that that is our primary way that we're going to notify people. In reality, the primary way we're going to notify is public safety, law enforcement and fire going up and down the street, banging on doors, telling people that they're going to evacuate. That's our primary system. Everything after that is supplemental. But Zone Haven really connects all of that and it supports that door to door banging. Because it, it pre-plans all where our evacuation routes are going to be, our traffic control points. It helps with the traffic flow during an emergency. And we have our kickoff meeting tomorrow morning at 10. We're, we're really excited about that. And the planning, the planning process will be that the public safety agencies within the five geographical areas of Marin will get together, coordinate their plans and then Zone Haven will stitch them all together seamlessly. What I like about Zone Haven is that it's instantaneous visual representation to the public when a public safety official creates an evacuation order and it's identified on their map, it's instantaneously identified on the map for any residents that may be using the web interface. But again, it, the, the incident commanders will work side by side with each other and make sure that the, the personal notifications are being done as well. We also are engaging in an ingress and egress evacuation route study. It's first of its kind. We're going to be putting together the technology industry along with our academics to evaluate all of our evacuation routes, give them a rating. So that we know what our best evacuation routes are safety wise and our most dangerous evacuation routes are. So we can be strategic about prioritizing which routes we're going to work on first. After that route has been improved, then we would can go in and, and re-score that route and we'll be able to see how much of an effect that we've had with our work. And we are working with the transportation authority of Marin to get a lot of the transportation data embedded into our new system. That's just what happened with our 20 and 21 work plan. We're starting our planning for our 21, 22 work plan. The operations committee and advisory technical committee will be putting together the projects for what's called our core budget, which is 60% of our budget. One of the things that we'll be looking at doing is increasing chipper days by at least 50% throughout the county. We would like to see chipper days through every community in the county. Each individual agency is planning for their local mitigation projects. And I, I do want to give a shout out to Central Marin Fire, specifically Chief Martin and Todd Lando. You have a phenomenal team that's working for you. And they're, they, they are the leaders in the county. And they're putting together just great plans that are going to make your communities that much safer. We're also enhancing our defensive space evaluation program throughout all of the jurisdictions. So that we have a consistent message of what we're looking for from our residents, giving them the tools and, and the, the knowledge in order to make their homes safer. And I'm, I'm very excited about what the MWPA can do and the increased safety that we're going to see here in the county. And with that, I'm open for any questions from you.
Mark, thank you so much. That was a, a really informative presentation and we really appreciate the work that you and the Marin wildfire prevention authority are doing. We're going to open this up to questions from council members and then we will go to questions and comments from the public. And David, did I see your hand?
Yeah. Uh, Mark, are you still in line for bringing that Zone Haven app essentially to public in approximately May 1st territory?
Yeah, we feel with their track record, their systems that they have in place, our kickoff meeting being February 17th. And three months after that, I, I feel we're, we highly confident we'll have that in place before fire season starts.
That's great. One of the things that when Chief Martin and Todd Lando held the workshop on, on fire safety issues here that was raised by Keith Axtell from Chapman Park and then others echoed it was say, we're doing all this work and, and we have all, all this chipper activity going on, but there are few people who are holding out and they're not doing, they're not removing a batch of bamboo or a batch of acacia trees. And there's, it's leaning over the street or it's leaning over a neighbor's house. Are you seeing the sort of attitude, if you will, turning a little bit in the county such that there will be more tough enforcement, if you will, of those who are holding back and not taking care to create defensible space?
You know, our, our initial approach is through education and encouraging people through knowledge to make a change in what they're doing on their landscape. And when it comes to any enforcement, that really is up to the local jurisdictions to enact code enforcements. And I do think that could be one of the strengths of the MWPA is to help create consistent code ordinances throughout the different jurisdictions. Cause if you look at every, at all the jurisdictions, there is a very different code, code ordinance. You know, like the Ross Valley Fire Department has a code ordinance that allows for abatement. And most of the other jurisdictions don't allow for abatement. And I don't think any of them have any teeth in for any teeth in an ordinance that allows for us to imply sanctions or anything else on property owners that aren't doing anything other than right now education. So it definitely is up to the councils to come up with their code ordinance.
And here in Corder Madera, I believe Ruben, you can answer this. We do have ordinances on the books to, to provide for abatement, right? I believe we've actually taken recently some abatement activities and we have then, uh, you know, essentially find the offending property owners to reimburse the taxpayers for that abatement. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor Beckman, that is correct. Um, and within Central Marin, both Corvada and Larkspur, we have the ability to go into a property and abate it. It just can tend to be a drawn out process. Most of what we try to do is educate and encourage similar to what Chief Brown mentioned. Um, and then every once in a while you get those one or two properties that are completely unmaintained that where the education and the encouragement doesn't work, then you have to bring in the enforcement component.
Great. Thank you.
If I could tack on to the abatement piece, there is a stipulation within the MWPA ordinance that says that we need to put two 2% of our defensible space monies into an abatement budget for local agencies to be able to use if they have that ordinance in place. So that is, it's not that much money though. It's, it's $78,000 a year that we'll be putting into an abatement fund. Because you do need to have the available funds before you can go abate. And then the liens on the property taxes would replenish that fund.
Yeah. And then if I can add on to that, um, on the abatement side, well, we've been kind of moving instead of doing the court ordered abatements, which are time consuming, laborious, takes a lot of staff time. What we're moving towards is the voluntary abatement where we know where these properties are and then we'll come in there with Todd Lando and myself and then try to encourage them to allow us to go ahead and then voluntary abate it using Measure C funds.
That's great. Cause I mean, at the end of the day, what it all comes down to is getting these properties abated as quickly as possible. And if it turns out that the carrot is quicker than the stick, that's fantastic. So, thank you. Todd, were you raising your hand?
Yeah, I was just going to say too, and it's, it's being creative. Like the chief said, you know, last year we had Marla Orth and her team with the chipper program, uh, help us abate a couple of properties. Um, and also I just want to bring to everyone's attention too, that we have a hundred thousand dollars dedicated within our sales tax Measure F fund, a hundred thousand committed to code enforcement to support the fire team. And so as you know, we have Mike Moriarty, but we're also hiring two additional part-time, 30 hour a week code enforcement officers to help both the fire department and police department this coming year. So we are committed to it.
David?
Mark, you mentioned in your remarks, home hardening and defensible space and evacuation routes. And you didn't especially call out undergrounding of utilities as a preventive measure. There are a few people on this call who feel that that's, should be a higher priority than it has been given to date. What is your feeling based on your long experience in this area of the fit and, and, and role of power line undergrounding?
So you know, this, this is a common question and I've actually lived it. I live in a community that has underground power lines. I've been evacuated twice due to wildfire, one from the Tubbs fire, one from the glass fire. The glass fire actually destroyed homes in my community. Specifically, the glass fire was not started by power lines. It was started five miles away from my house and impacted my community four hours later. There are so many other causes for fire besides power lines. And the expenditure to underground power lines is so expensive, it would stop us from doing any vegetation management projects outside of undergrounding the power lines. And then so if we put all of our money in that bucket of undergrounding power lines and then we have a wildfire that started not from power lines. Or maybe it's, maybe they are started from power lines, but from a community that, that hasn't undergrounded their power lines. And we haven't done any vegetation management practices, any evacuation route clearings, then we've been completely ineffective. I think we need to prioritize where we're putting our limited resource and that is our funding into what is going to work for any fire for regardless of what the cause is. In a perfect world, would we have a, a, a complete underground PG&E infrastructure? I don't know. But I, I think it's, the priority has to be on a measures that affect all fires, not just fires that have been, that could be started by power lines.
Thank you.
And on that, for instance, since I came up, I'll just ask Todd, would you be willing to just recap real fast? I know, I know that staff is undertaking kind of a baseline study just to better understand the role that, that power lines play in communities like Corder Madera in starting wildfires and to better understand what the actual risk in Corder Madera is that's posed by these wildfires. Because as, as Mark said, you know, at the end of the day, what we have to do is channel public funds towards the most effective public safety use. Um, and, and you know, the reason that we're undertaking this study is because we're not prejudging, you know, whether or not power lines are a significant risk factor, which is why we're doing the study to ascertain factually. You know, what the risk is. I mean, I know that we have members of the community with all, all varying opinions on what, you know, is or isn't the most severe, you know, risk factor in wildfires. But I was just wondering if you could recap just real fast for folks on the line, uh, what that kind of study that we're undertaking entails.
Yeah, we want to position the council and the community, um, moving forward with our, you know, we have, we have a good mechanism of funding moving forward. And so to position us in our decision-making as we move forward using science and, and priorities. And so I think this document's a really important one. Um, it was recommended from our, our residents, our partners on the hill, um, to have an independent third party come in, do an RFP process, just like you said, Mr. Mayor. On, you know, looking at those neighborhoods, three specific within our Wui on the hillside. And, and you know, identifying, you know, cost, how much it would cost and then financing options, opportunities, grant opportunities. And then, you know, position us as we, you know, move forward, we'll attach that to the climate adaptation plan on all the work we did there. And it'll just position us on an annual basis moving forward. There, there may be a specific evacuation route ingress egress. Maybe potential utility poles on the, on the top of the mountain. Who knows, you know? And so at least we'll have that documentation to work with our fire team and then our council and our resources on an annual basis on projects. And so I think it's a really important piece, uh, moving forward. So that, that'll come to the council, the RFP process in probably the second meeting in March. And then hopefully towards the end of this year, we'll have that document and we can start to talk about it.
That is very exciting. Thank you. Um, any other questions from council members before we open this up to the public? All right. If not, then we're going to go ahead and open up public comment on this presentation. So if you'd like to ask a question or make a comment on the presentation that we just heard, please go ahead and raise your hand here on Zoom or email public comment at tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we get any email public comments for this item?
No, we did not receive any email public comments on this item.
Okay, great. And I'm not seeing any hands go up here on Zoom. We've got a lot of folks on the line, so I'll just give, give another couple of seconds here just to make sure anybody who might want to comment has an opportunity. We'll say going, going. Gone. Okay. No hands going up there. So we'll close public comment and bring this back to the council for any just discussion points or closing comments on this fantastic presentation from Mark. And if there are none, I just want to again, thank Mark and, and your team for all the work that you're doing. And I also want to recognize our council member, Bob Rivasio, for the work that he has done with MWPA. So thank you guys all for, for this fantastic work. I think, you know, we're, we're all aware that, that wildfire is one of the two big threats that Corder Madera faces. And we know that, you know, this is one of the challenges that keeps us up at night. So thank you so much for really making this a priority and, and seeing to it that our community can be as safe as possible. And Mark, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mark. Absolutely. My pleasure. And just remember on a, on a phone call or email away. So if you have any questions, uh, feel free to reach out.
Beautiful. Thank you very much, sir.
Have a great day, everybody.
You too. Have a good night. All right. So, um, we decided to move our second presentation a little later on in the agenda so we can get to our business items first. Just real quick, we have to do the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require further discussion. Any member of the council, staff or public can pull an item from the consent calendar for further discussion if they would like to. Would any members of the council like to pull an item from the consent calendar? If not, we'll turn this over to the public. Would any members of the public like to pull an item from the consent calendar? If you'd like to, please just go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or you can email public comment at tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we get any emails for any consent calendar items?
We did not receive any emailed comments.
Okay. And we've got no hands up here. So we will bring it back to council for any comments or a possible motion on the consent calendar. David?
I'd like to move the approval of consent calendar items for A through four F.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thanks, Bob. And Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Council member Casissa?
Yes.
Council member Lee?
Yes.
Council member Rivasio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. There are no public hearings. So that brings us to our business items. The first is six A, which is consideration and possible adoption of resolution number oh six, 2021, amending a prior town council resolution. And essentially amending the Christmas Tree Hill parking plan to increase the size of parking space number one 10 and decrease the size of space number one 11. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Uh, thank you, Mayor Beckman, members of the council. So in 1993, the parking stalls on Christmas Tree Hill were approved by, uh, resolution. Since then, several have been amended due to various things such as private development. In 2019, we received a request for modifications to two stalls near two 10 morning side. One would enlarge one stall and one would reduce the size of another. The net result would be about two net increases in parking stalls. And I wanted to show a little bit, quick diagram showing the details of that. And so I'm going to share a screen. Bear with me. So this diagram shows the two stalls in question right here, space one 10, which the reddish pinkish dot dash line is at the size of the current stall. There was a recent improvement to build this retaining wall, which opened up the potential for additional space for parking here. Separately, we have space one 11 down here, which is being discussed as being reduced. And part of the reason we believe it makes sense to reduce this is to provide additional improvements to emergency vehicle egress, ingress and egress. The stall here, although it shows it having, you know, perhaps the 12 foot width required. What we tend to see is that when you have a, a parking stall that's small, vehicles tend to hang over the edge. And therefore frequently it's been observed that, um, there hasn't been that 12 foot width. So we believe by reducing this down again with the combination of the added spots on the other side, it's a win-win where we have approximately 13 and a half feet for ingress and egress as well as a net increase into additional stalls. And that is the summary of the amendments being proposed.
Great. Thank you, RJ. Do we have any questions from the council on this? Alrighty. If not, we're going to go ahead and open this up to public comment. So if any members of the public would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email public comment at tcmail.org. Our first hand up is from Mr. Jordan Silver.
Hello. Uh, am I being heard?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Mayor Beckman. Uh, first of all, I want to thank RJ for his, um, work on this and, and support of this project over a couple of years. I know you guys have a lot of probably more important stuff frankly going on than rejiggering a couple of parking places. But, um, from up here on Christmas Tree Hill, thank you to, to RJ and to the town. Um, I think RJ really summarized it. Well, you know, we, um, did some landscape renovations that had the effect of opening up what is now just basically, you know, open unstriped land adjacent to an existing 45 foot parking space. This is space one 10. And so people park there now anyway. This is really an attempt to sort of bring that within the legal striped, you know, bounds of, of what's allowed. And, um, it also rationalizes, you know, it's wider than what's there now. I think all of these stalls, one 10 and one 11, especially one 11, they're not realistic stalls. They don't really accommodate at six feet wide today's vehicle widths. And so as RJ said, you know, living up here, we, we see frequently, I'd say in a super majority of cases, people are actually outside the existing lines. And so the modification to one 10 accommodates additional vehicles. And so the modification to 110 accommodates additional vehicles and rationalizes the line so people can actually park inside them. And then on space 111, you know, the punchline there is that space has been problematic for a long time, even before construction in the area. Because it's, if you look at it, it's shaped like a V and it hugs the edge of the road and it's only six feet wide. And so it really is a significant choke point for egress. I've witnessed over the years, people parking outside that boundary and for example UPS trucks or FedEx trucks having to back up and go around the other, you know, there's a circle around Morningside Drive, right? Completely go around because they can't get through there. And so I can only imagine that if that's the situation when there's a fire, it's going to block the fire engine from going through there. So the, the modification to 111 brings the boundary to eight feet by centralizing the stall and, and, you know, reducing it to one car, but providing a realistic eight foot boundary that people can actually park in. I think it's going to be a really great improvement to egress and fire safety. And so this was our, our recommendation, we're the, I guess, instigator or maybe applicant of this plan, so to speak. And we obviously are in full, full support of it and, and thank you for your consideration of it.
Great. Thank you very much. Next hand up is going to be from Nancy.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you for having me. And I'd like to know what is the reason why the parking issue from 2018 is being reviewed again now? In 2018, I was told that 12 feet was the minimum required street width. Now the math is different. The measurement is from the end of parking spot in space 111 to the edge of the road across a street. And due to an eight foot requirement for the width of a parking spot, this area of the road is now deemed too narrow. And the only recourse is to remove the spot, a spot in space 110. No mention is made in the staff report of the new construction of the concrete stem wall, which angles to the edge of the street or the six foot tall wood gate and fence extending from there to the corner of the garage at 204 Morningside, like this doesn't exist. If this new construction wasn't there, we probably wouldn't be having the discussion about emergency vehicle access. The new map in attachment two shows the measurement from the edge of the northernmost parking spot in space 111. If this was all we were concerned about, just that parking spot, then we could eliminate either this spot or the spot across the street in space 110. But it's not. The new construction is also at the street's edge and it is a hard surface that no one wants to drive up against. It also creates a blind curve that did not exist before. Emergency vehicle access should have been addressed during the permitting process prior to construction. Officials and staff in the town government ought to always be concerned about public safety. And in 2018, this did not seem to happen. And now we are attempting to make amends by removing a much more easily accessible parking spot than the one along a solid six foot concrete wall. It's difficult to parallel park against a wall. In 2018, two other neighbors also voiced their disagreement on this proposal. I also wanted to say what a great job was done on that culvert at the end of the street. We haven't had a lot of rain yet, but it looks like this work will stand up well for many, many decades to come. Thanks for good work on that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Nancy. Our next hand up is going to be from Siobhan.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Dennis Dyson here, Siobhan Colty of 134 Edison Avenue. We're approximately, I don't know, 250, 300 feet away down the street, if you will. And we frequently have to park up there because it's tight parking on the hill here. And we have encountered that pinch point many times. Mark Brown, who spoke earlier, is a great straight man for this proposal, because he does talk about the emergency access. And I believe by having this proposal go through, it will add parking, especially for guests up here as well, and, and be safer going through the, the choke point. And with all the news, literally everybody's seen Amazon and UPS go up and down, up and down every street in the world, it seems, they definitely get hung up with that. Checkpoint. So we are voicing our, our support for the proposal. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. We do not have any other hands up from folks on the line right now. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this item from folks who did not have a chance to speak?
No, we did not receive any additional public comments. I was forwarded an emailed comment from Jordan Silver and it's included as late correspondence in the packet, but he already spoke, but there is more in there if anybody would like to view the remainder of his comments.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Seeing no other hands up, we're going to close public comment and bring this back to council for discussion and a possible motion. Fred?
Yeah, I have a quick question for RJ. If we shrink space 111 down, what kind of awareness or public awareness do you do? Besides just repainting, restriping, so people are aware that that space has been shrunk down? Cause I know people are creatures of habit and I could see even though, you know, changing that, somebody's still parking in that space. Even though it may not know, no longer be a legal space.
Yeah, good question. So we did send out notices prior to tonight's meeting, 15 days plus in advance to 300 foot radius. So that captured at least 15 or so residents. So they should know about it. And then separately, yeah, we will probably stripe it and hopefully not, but worst case, you know, there, there could be a ticket involved to enforce. So. Yeah, that's to answer your question.
Okay. And then one other question for, are there any future plans, do you know, to re-stripe parking spaces up there? Cause I know when you go up there, again, cars over the years have grown in size, SUVs, oversized cars. And a lot of the striping up there, I noticed it's faded away.
If it's simply refreshing, you know, we can take a look at doing that pretty, pretty easily. If we're talking about modifying and adjusting, that's actually probably a, a rather time consuming effort. So if that's something that is desired by the community, we can discuss, you know, what that might cost and, and look like and prioritize it within our work plan.
Thanks.
One just kind of related question to, to what Fred mentioned. Could we maybe, if, if enforcement comes into play, could we do like a maybe one or two months sort of grace period of just warnings over tickets just to try it? I know, like Fred said, people are creatures of habits and especially when it's in your neighborhood, you're used to parking where you park. And so if things change, you know, I think we want to give folks a little, little leeway there to adjust. Thank you. Any other comments or questions, David?
Having been on the hill for over 24 years and 22 of those engaged with the Hill Dwellers Association, there was no topic that unified and, and stirred up public attention more than parking spaces and generally to try to get more of them, right? Not, not fewer. And occasionally there are trades. The, the police have always had a policy of doing a warning sign first. And the rule is actually you can't be abusing for a longer period of time. Now, if you're partly in a space, you get, you usually get 72 hours or so of leeway. So I'm not too worried about that. The, the white lines are well known and they're well marked up and down. I, I also, like Nancy, wanted to compliment Jordan Silver for the work that he did on the drainage at the end. A stream literally runs down under his driveway and then goes under the roadway. And he spent a lot of money fixing that so it doesn't flood over the whole roadway as well as coming out and, and creating two additional parking spaces that are not his own, that are just for the public. So I think we all ought to be congratulating him. Yeah. The tricky part is inside curves because inside curves tend to have that contribution to the pinch, especially if somebody's got a big vehicle. And to me, it's just a, a simple mathematical tape measure trade off. And I trust DPW has done that carefully.
Great. Thank you, David. If nobody else has any comments, we will take a motion. Bob?
Yeah, I actually visited the site this morning and anything that increases safety and parking and access on Christmas Tree Hill to me is a must do. So I will move that we approve this.
Great. And it looks like Fred was first with the second. So we have a motion in a second. Could we have a vote, please, Rebecca?
Councilmember Caesar?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. That brings us to item 6B, which is discussion and possible action to determine whether to fill a possible upcoming vacancy on the town council by either having the council appoint a new member or holding an election.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to turn this over to the vice mayor and have him start off this item.
Thank you very much, members of council and members of the public. To my surprise, I am in a position of our family is getting ready to relocate back to the East Coast from whence we came two dozen years ago. And so tonight I am giving my 63 day notice, nine weeks notice of departure from the town council. My promise is to do everything I can to help the council between now and the end of April and beyond if it's physically and legally able to be done. But I'm hoping that the town can put together a process to have a replacement put in place before 63 days from now. And then I will gleefully step off and do whatever I can to coach and help that individual to fit into this, this slot. So it's been great. I, I have absolutely no complaint with the way the town is managing itself or the way the rest of the council has been managing itself, especially under Mayor Beckman. I really have enjoyed it and, and really respect what you're doing, especially looking at the big and deep and expensive issues over the, that will occupy the town for the long haul, trying to face those today. And so I'm, I'm very much impressed with what you're doing, how you're doing it, and I have no complaints whatsoever. This is just post-retirement, the next phase of my life.
For us, and we appreciate all your leadership and guidance over the past few years. But we wish you the well and, and if anyone deserves it, it's definitely you. So we wish you the best in the next journey. And so, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this brings us to a similar discussion we had back in 2017 is the last time we've been faced with something like this. And so really the government code allows us two options. We can either make an interim appointment or we can call a special election to fill the vacancy within 60 days, beginning from that vacancy date. And so I just want to, you know, on the appointment side, again, I just really want to note, and we had a really good discussion. And so staff feels comfortable with what we heard from the council back in 2017, as well as the community. And also really the precedent that's been set over the past 60 years. There have been nine instances over the last 60 years where council has been faced with appoint someone to council or hold a special election. And in every one of those situations, nine times, the last being in 2017, the council has chosen to appoint. That is the recommendation of the, the town manager and staff at this point. But if you were to do a special election, just quickly on page two, the fiscal impact. And I think really this is the core of being, you know, fiscally responsible and and ensuring that we, you know, save taxpayer money when we, when we can. It would be expensive for us to hold an election, a vote by mail election would be approximately $43,000 to $57,000. We have 7,200 registered voters. If we were to do an in-person election, it would be 57,000, 57,000 to $72,000 as an approximate. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Todd. And David, thank you for, for making that announcement that, as Todd said, it's bittersweet. You know, I, we're happy for you, happy that you're entering this next phase in your life, but we'll be certainly very sorry to lose you from the council. Fred, I saw your hand.
Yeah, Todd, can you just briefly explain the appointment process?
Yeah. So what we would, there's a few ways to do it and Amy can jump in here, but what we do if council so directs us to do the appointment process, we would immediately open an application process. The app, a draft application that we've used in the past in 2017 is attached to your staff report for review. We can also attach a council member to that process to make sure, you know, we send out the appropriate application, but that would go out to the community for a period of time. And then we would close that process. And then we'd bring it back to council and council would review those applications. They could do an appointment. They can also do interviews. And really it's, it's just, it's contingent on what the council would like to do. Last time in 2017, we did interviews and then the council appointed somebody.
Do you know what kind of timeframe we're looking at, plus or minus?
Yeah, the way we, we set ourselves up for, we could actually appoint someone the second meeting in March, as soon as March. Yeah, we would do a two week application process, close it, bring it back to council for interviews and an appointment.
Okay, thanks.
As I recall, the ordinance, the statute doesn't particularly set a particular process for the appointment. So there's some variability in how the, the town can choose to do it. And I believe the appointment must be made within 60 days of the vacancy.
Okay, great. Thank you, Amy. Any other questions right now? If not, we will, oh, yeah, Rebecca.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Beckman. I just wanted to say in 2017, when we filled that vacancy, we I think spent two weeks broadcasting the opportunity. And then we held an interview at a special council meeting that took place earlier in the evening before the regular town council meeting and the full council interviewed the, the applicants. And then at the end of that special meeting, they deliberated, they took a break, they deliberated and then they came back and opened session in the regular council meeting and made their determination of an appointment.
So in, in terms of attendance at meetings there, you, you could do this in such a way as to have no vacancy period, really. Right? If I'm, I'm letting you know that I'm available through the end of April and it could be filled before that. And if so, then I'll step aside and help, help that person get melded in.
Great. Okay. Any other questions from the council before we open this up to public comment? All right. Then we're going to go ahead and turn this over to members of the public. So if anybody on the line would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. As always, our members of the public get three minutes apiece to comment. I'm not seeing any hands go up here. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comment on this?
I will check again, but as of a few minutes ago, we had not. No, we, we have not.
Okay. And we did just have a hand go up. So we are going to hear from Matt Kaufman.
Good evening, council. I just have a question for the acting town attorney. Would the outgoing vice mayor be allowed to vote on an appointment for his replacement? Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Let's see, I don't see any other hands up now, so we can just go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council. And then Amy, why don't you start us off with that response?
I believe so. I'd have to look again at the language of the statute. But yes, I believe the outgoing member can. But I will double check and get back to council before we get to that step.
Okay, great. Thank you. That, that was a good question, Matt, and that'll be helpful to know, Amy, just so we can kind of figure out.
It was a question that I had too.
Yes. Excellent. So we are back to council discussion now. Any, any comments or discussion points from the council on whether to either hold an election or make an appointment? Except applications. Yeah, Fred?
Yeah. Given that historically we've appointed, and for me, given that, I don't think it's a good use of public funds to hold a special election. I would make the motion that we go ahead and move forward with the appointment process.
Great. Yeah, Bob?
I'll second that.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'll just, I don't know if anybody else wanted to weigh in. I'll just, I'll just say that I agree. You know, I think given that there's less than half this term left, I, I do think it, it wouldn't really be a great use of taxpayer money to have a, you know, 50 plus thousand dollar special election for a handful of months. Anyway, we have a motion and a second. Thank you, guys. Rebecca, I suppose we're ready for a vote then. Or no, we don't need to vote on this, do we? This is just direction.
It was, it was direction to staff, but we can take. It was it was direction to staff, but we can take a vote to formalize the motion. The direction was if a special election was was requested by council, we'd need to return at the next council meeting with the proper resolution and paperwork to proceed with calling that special election. But in this case, I mean, there's no nothing wrong with formalizing your direction of the vote if you if you'd like, but it wasn't.
Okay, Amy is nodding, so let's do it.
Call the vote.
Yes, please.
Councilmember Casita?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes, thank you. That brings us to item six C, which is discuss and provide direction to staff regarding the need to change the town's procedures in light of recent amendment to state law, essentially rejiggering the whole election schedule. I'm not going to read the whole title. Staff, please take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll start this off again. I want to thank Rebecca and Amy, our town attorney, for drafting the last staff report and the staff report. I'm going to start off and I'm just, you know, we've been, this seems to be a revolving discussion and I just staff the town manager, assistant manager, town clerk and town attorney level, we've really looked at this and just looking at how town operations work and and the best chance for voter turnout for ensuring our operation of changeover of the the mayor and the vice mayor and all the operations we do as a government, it makes a lot of sense for us to move to the November cycle. It ensures that we're on the general election cycle. You know, if it's a federal primary, I believe it's in June, right, Rebecca? And if it's a state, it's the other way. If it's a federal primary, it's in March. If it's a state primary, every other year, it's it's in June. And they're going to continue if if history is any is is any measure, they'll continue to change it. So we think this best positions us as well as with our cohorts in the county. And so we recommend, one, that you consider moving to a November cycle. This would extend your current seat, the seats a few months. And so that I do want to point that out, but it just it really makes the most sense from an operational standpoint. And then there's a there's a second piece to this discussion as well. Currently, the council rules in in policy regulations, the changeover of the of our seats, the mayor, vice mayor and all of our committees, we do that when the election cycle is is certified by the county. And so in this case, if you moved it to November, that election would be certified usually the first week in December. And so that would be when we actually change over our seats. And so keep in mind that right now, we're set to transition in April. And so that would make that that would push that transition to November. So I want to point that out to council. I think at the staff level, we would recommend, we're ultimately going to end up there at some point. There isn't a nexus necessarily, an exigent access for you to do it today. You know, you could keep it for April, you could move it, the transition to July first, which would tie to our work plan. Or you could follow the council procedures and and follow, you know, when the election is certified, which would be December in this case. So the recommendation on the floor would be, consider moving the election cycle to November. And then the transition of our councils, you know, the mayor, vice mayor and the other committees would also follow, you know, in December when it's certified. But if there's any reluctance by council, I think a middle ground that makes sense really to me would be not April, it would be July, that would time to the work plan. But with that same statement, what I would also put out to council, and I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor, is we may want to push our work plan to the annual cycle as well, January to December thirty-first. Because then we we solve the election problem, we solve the transition problem, all the other councils do the same transition, as you know, when you're on new committees, it's January is when you take those up. And then we could also have our work plan do that as well. And and I think the reason why I say that is, you know, the council has to agree on that work plan. The mayor seat alone doesn't decide the work plan for the year. It's a discussion as a whole. You know, the the council has historically, from my experience, allowed, you know, the mayor, if there's an agreement, which there has been in recent years, to really, you know, take the leadership role on some things that are key, you know, to what we're trying to do as a town. And I think having the same mayor during that work plan is helpful to staff because that's something you really work on a day-to-day basis with the mayor, you know, moving the work plan forward. So I just throw that out there for thought. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but really, it's going to be Amy and Rebecca doing the hard work.
Great. Thank you, Todd. My only question is, why the heck does the state love moving around elections so much? Insane. Anyway, any questions right now from council members before we open this up to the public? David?
Is there anything that prevents the town from separating the terms of mayor and vice mayor from the question of assignments to various committees that you that really has to follow an election cycle because you've got new people in the role of taking positions on other committees such that the mayor and vice mayor would serve fiscal year to fiscal year, July one to June thirty, and keep in line with a budgeting process, keep in line with our fiscal year? Is there anything that would restrict that from being separated and then and then, you know, we could move to the November and year-end for elections? Which would be when there's the bigger elections and I I've always thought that that's the better time for us to have our elections, too.
You can do whatever you want. It's just we would have to amend, I think, right, the 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 rules, the council rules, I think, right, Amy? And so but you can you can do that in amendment.
Right. If I if I'm understanding the question, it's could you move to November elections but not do appointment of mayor and vice mayor in December? Could you do it with the fiscal year? And yes, I I don't think there's anything that would prohibit you from doing it. And we would just need to, if we're going to change the elections, we have to amend the municipal code. And if we're going to change the rules, we have to amend the rules.
Okay. And then one question for you. So Todd, just to clarify, what you feel like is operationally cleanest for staff is just to move to November elections and then have reorganization and the work plan kind of happen around the new year. So it's all kind of clumped at the, you know, the same turnover. Is that right?
If you chose to do that, I would do it. I would consider that or I would leave the work plan the way it is fiscal year, as the vice mayor said, and do the the transition at that point.
Okay, Rebecca?
Thank you, Mayor Beckman. Just for historical purposes, before twenty eighteen, when we moved to the June election, elections were held in November of odd years. And then those were certified by the end of November. And then the first meeting in December, the council would reorganize, select a new mayor and vice mayor and then go through the process of selecting, rejiggering the committee appointments. And then that would take place at the second meeting in December, after everything's settled out. So whatever point you decide to set your reorganization, it would generally be reorganization at one meeting and then the the next meeting after that, you would do your committee appointments.
Okay. And then one other question that just occurred to me. Is there, from staff's perspective, any any operational like inefficiency to having the work plan not aligned with the fiscal year? Or is that not a factor? Okay.
It's fine, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from council members? All right, we're going to go ahead and open this item up to the public then. So any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we get any email public comments?
No, we did not.
Great, thank you. And we've got one hand up from Phyllis. Just a reminder for everybody, as always, it's three minutes a person and we're going to hear from Phyllis.
Thanks, Eli. Since Todd had asked me and Diane, the last time you went through this moving and I gave advice due to what I've worked with with other clients, I'll bring it up again. You want to keep it as simple as possible. What the state is doing is ridiculous. I definitely say move the public election to November. Because who knows when they're going to move the primary next? As far as David's suggestion, I would suggest the opposite. As I say, keep it simple. If you have a November election, go back to the old style that once it is the election is certified by the county. The December meeting is when you elect your mayor and vice mayor. And then at the second meeting of the year, if you, sometimes you may not have a second meeting and then you would do it the first meeting in January, you put together your committees. I think it's important, this is what's done by the other towns and cities in the county. It's done by the school boards and the other public entities. And I think the more that people can coordinate, the better it is. You don't want to, in the middle of the year, start changing people around and who, if you're going to change who the mayor is and vice mayor, you're going to change the committee because those who take those lead positions may not want to be on committees. There are all sorts of things that could happen. Just do it all at one time, keep it clean, move forward and take care of the real business of the town as you have because you've done a good job and let's keep it up.
Great. Thank you very much, Phyllis. We do not have any other hands up, so we will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. And then we're going to make direction to staff. So let's just kind of break this up as it's done in the staff report. So we'll start with, I guess, the timing of the elections. Staff recommendation is to just move our elections to November so that we're not tied to California's ever-shifting primary extravaganza. Does anybody disagree with that? Bob, you got a hand up?
I'm just going to say, I think that's a great idea. We should absolutely do that. I've been screwing around with this for years and it's it's a mess. Let's just move to November and in a high turnout year, which we're doing.
Perfect. Great.
I I would suggest breaking this down into a couple motions. The first motion and vote on the November election and the second on when you want to select mayor and vice mayor.
Great, thank you, Amy. So in that case, we'll entertain a motion on moving our council elections to coincide with the November election.
I'll move.
Thank you. Great. And Fred's second?
Okay, thank you. I'll call the vote, but just to clarify, I would need to bring back an ordinance to introduce the the change and and I'll work on that with the town attorney.
Sounds good.
Councilmember Casita?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes, thank you. So now that the timing of election is settled, let's talk about when to do our reorganization. Who would like to start off that discussion? All right, I'll just share. I I don't have any strong feelings one way or the other. I I guess I just kind of feel like it probably makes the most sense to just do it, you know, the first meeting after election results are certified and, you know, just get on with it. Yeah, Charles?
I agree with the the selection of the mayor and the vice mayor. My concern is is, you know, we have a small staff and and usually the second meeting in December gets pushed. So I just wouldn't want to include language that forces a second meeting in December and that, as Phyllis had suggested, that sometimes that can happen in the first meeting of January to make that flexibility.
Sure, Rebecca?
Thank you, Mayor Beckman. As it stands right now, I don't believe the council rules and procedures touch on the committee appointments. That's just our standard practice is to give them time to mull over their options and then decide who the new mayor wants to appoint in those puzzle pieces. So it could happen the the second meeting of December, it could happen the first meeting in January. It's it's not what what is dictated in the rules and procedures is the reorganization of the council.
And for that, or to address Charles's point, our language could just say, if we wanted to, it could just say that we'll reorganize at the first meeting after the certification so that it doesn't, so that we're not saying we'll reorganize at the second meeting in December.
Actually, that the way it reads is that the council will reorganize at the first meeting following the certification of the results of the election. So if you, A, do choose to move your elections to November of even years, then and you don't choose to update the rules and procedures, the procedure would would stay and it would just automatically become the first meeting after the certification of the results of the election. The revising of the rules and procedures only comes into play if you want to pick an arbitrary date to do that reorganization, then we would need to update the language and the rules and procedures.
Got it. Okay. And okay, perfect. David?
Small question, or maybe it's not. If we move to November, which I like, does what happens to the mayor and vice mayor appointments? And is this going to be, since we're an odd year, is this going to be a short-year term? Or are we going to extend and have a rollover into new folks this coming December? I I I really like the present mayor in place and so I would recommend that it's that it keep be kept together until the end of the year, but that's just one opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can go whichever way the council feels on that. Again, I don't have any strong feelings one way or the other. Who else would like to share some thoughts?
Yeah. I hate to put you guys on the spot, but Fred and Charles, this is going to affect you more than anybody. So, you know, I'm comfortable moving, you know, to to November, December, but it's really in extending current terms. But I think it's really up to you guys and where you guys are. So I'm gonna, I hate to kind of pass this off, but I want to hear from you guys. Thanks.
Go ahead, Rebecca. I had a question, but you may answer it.
Just just talking this this out loud a little bit, if you you can talk over your options, you could proceed with the reorganization in April, which we one year after the last time the council reorganized. And you could even make it April to April of the following year. But in twenty-two, if the ordinance passes, you would have a November election in twenty-two. And at some point, you'd have to make that decision that somebody gets their mayoral mayoral term extended, somebody has to take a shortened term. You either have to reach the decision sooner or or later, but the decision will will have to be approached at some point.
So I can speak to that. Ultimately, I want to make the best decision for the town and the operation of the town and the organization of the the council moving forward outside of my own personal experience with those decisions. But, you know, I don't recommend that we continue to, basically, if the organization is set for April, I think we should do that. I don't see why this should change any of that, so.
Fred, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, I would agree with Charles. I just think we need to do what's better for the town and make sure that the alignment makes sense going forward. And I agree with what Phyllis said. I just think we need to keep to keep it simple. So I think it's better to do what's better for the town instead of doing what's better on an individual level.
Agree, yes. So I don't know.
So a year from now, there would be a terms of mayor and vice mayor that would last a year and a half, a year from now, instead of now.
Well, so. Oh, go ahead.
What's on the floor, I think, of being discussed, Councilmember Casita, would be really what's going to happen in the next six weeks is you're going to have to appoint a vice mayor, right? Because you're going to have to fill the vice mayor's role. That's the first step. The second one would be that you're extending, so we have to amend the policy, the council member policies, because you can't, you have in your policy that it's one year, you can't go over one year as mayor, so you have to amend that. And so the current mayor would stay mayor until, would be extended until November. In December, you would appoint a new mayor and vice mayor. And then they would keep their term for one year. And so you'd have the transition then in December. And then you'd keep doing that. December would now be the one-year transition. So this is the one exception in the current situation that we're in. You know, council member Beckman would be extended a series of months outside of the year, but everyone else would be would be one year moving forward. And if you look at the current appointments for the council members, if council members, Casita and me, were the next mayor, vice mayor, you would both have one-year terms as mayor. You would be in line for that when you were elected to council. So everyone would have a one-year appointment. No one would be cut short.
Right. So so again, it all syncs up.
Yeah, right. And so, yeah, the only thing that I'll say, just because I don't want, you know, I don't want to make this needlessly weird.
So I just want to say, I would never ask you guys to, you know, let me remain mayor until November. If you guys think that that's easiest, I'm happy to do it. If you guys would rather reorganize before November, I'm happy to do that, too. The only thing that I would ask is that regardless of when, you know, regardless of whether or not we reorganize before November, I do think that we should switch our reorganizations after that potential next reorganization to November is going forward. Did that make sense? Maybe not. Okay.
Kind of.
Sorry. So I'm just saying that regardless of what we do between now and November, let's reorganize in November. And then again, you know, every, you know, November, December, whatever it is going forward.
Right. Somehow we need to make an adjustment so we get on track with November, December.
Right, right. Exactly. So I guess let's ask then. So I guess let's ask then, does anybody feel strongly that we should or reorganize before this November? Or, or, you know, before this next November, December, because that would sync us up with the elections. Is that? Is that a, is that a, a good way to go about this? Bob, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I'm fine with doing it either way. I think the critical thing is that we sync up, you know, with the election, period. Because I've been doing this long enough to know that I think it's really critical that we do it that way. And I'm absolutely comfortable either extending current term or redoing mayor and vice mayor in April and extending the current terms the following November, December. It's not going to affect me as much. I don't, you know, so again, I'm happy to go either way. I hate to be so wishy-washy about it, but I want to make sure I'm listening to the other council members here and what they want to do and trying to be accommodating.
Totally. Yeah. So, so Fred and Charles, then, do you guys have any strong feelings, one way or the other, on, on, you know, what you think is best for the town? Since I think we all, we all agree that we want to do what's best for the town, I'm just not sure that one way or the other in this case is better or worse. So what do you guys think?
There's dead silence.
I'm gonna call somebody out if, if nobody suits up.
I feel guilty for, for mucking up the works by making my announcement, because prior to my announcement, there was just going to be somebody who would step into vice mayor's role, not somebody who would step forward into mayor other than potentially myself. And so I, I'm, I'm feeling guilty that I, I have made things a little bit more complicated, but but to me, the decision is, do you want to have a short term? If you have a role in, in April, then there's going to be a short-term mayor through November. If we're going to get on this, on the cycle that everybody seems to want, which is in November. Or you could have an extra half year on the existing mayor and appoint a new vice mayor right now, have plenty of headway to start and, and get in place, learn in place.
Yeah, well, I mean, for me, I'm happy to step into a role of vice mayor, mayor whenever that opportunity affords itself. But once again, I feel like to ask, you know, the two that are basically the recipients of that, it's a little conflicted and that this is, like I said, I want to do what's best for the town and the organization moving forward. And then you're like, well, you know, does somebody else get to be a mayor for a year and a half? Or do you want to be mayor for a year and a half? And it's like, you know, I, I don't think that that's a fair question to, to answer. And I don't know what the outcomes would be with those yet. So I just, you know, but I, I, you know, of course, you know, that's why I also want to hear what Fred has to say as well and what his goals are.
Okay. I'll clarify and make it simple. Okay. I think it's fair to do what's best for the town. What I would recommend is that we go ahead, basically, basically, it's then Eli's term until November, December of this year. And then in December, we go ahead and reappoint the mayor at that point in time, so it syncs everything up. And then the only thing we'd have to do is, is in April, I would assume April or sooner, appoint a vice mayor. I, I'm just going to keep it very simple thing. And I think that may be the best thing for all, because otherwise what will wind up happening is another thought is, in April, we're going to have to select a different, no offense Eli, mayor and vice mayor. Then that person is going to wind up getting what, a year and a half? Somebody's going to get a year and a half either on the front end or the back end. And Eli, you're on a roll, so you might as well go with the role right now and just do it that way. I just think it's the cleanest and simplest way to do it.
He, he was also, by virtue of COVID, he was cheated of having a decent first year.
This way I'll get a one in-person meeting or something.
The only thing, David, I would say to that is, I don't think Eli's been cheated out of everything. Because I think when you look at his accomplishments, the last X, no, you're laughing, but I really mean it. The last X amount of months as mayor. I think it's truly astounding what's been accomplished. And I give you even more credit, because that's in the midst of COVID. It's not like government shut down and we weren't doing anything. You know, ordinances were being passed, COVID relief was being passed, you know, the cap plan is coming together, you know, it's only a draft. There's a lot of things you accomplished. So I don't think COVID was a factor at all. I really don't. I think you stepped up more than anything else.
Wow, Fred, thank you. That is incredibly meaningful. I think, I think everybody on this council knows that 98% of the credit goes to staff all the time, just as a rule. But, but that was very sweet of you. Thank you. Anybody else want to make it? Rebecca?
Thank you, Rebecca. But I just have a question of, of the town attorney. Depending on how the direction to staff goes, are we thinking that the normal first meeting of April, when we would have expected to reorganize the council at that point, we would take a vote to possibly supersede the town council rules and procedures and appoint the mayor to an extended term? Or would we do that at the time that the new council member is appointed? Or when a new vice mayor is selected? There's, there's three different ways.
I, it sounds like the timing on those is going to be pretty close. So I, I think, you know, we can either amend the rules or vote to supersede them, but it sounds like the timeline is going to match up fairly close to when council member Kuhnhart's replacement would be appointed. So, I mean, I think, I, I don't think there's any set way in which we have to do this. Because we probably, I mean, we, we will likely, I, I think we'll probably have to maybe do it a, an amendment to sort of address the temporary situation if we extend the mayor's term. But I, I think those are sort of, you know, small things we can work out. I think, I think, you know, tonight we get the direction.
It wouldn't be this, this particular meeting tonight.
No, no, no. I think, I think tonight we're asking for council to, to direct, give us a direction on what their preference is in terms of how they want us to go. And then we can, we can do the mechanics of implementing it, just as we'll do the mechanics of the amendment to the municipal code.
So do we need a poster or do you just need guidance from us?
So since we, since we voted on moving the elections to November, maybe we should also vote on our plan to next reorganize after, you know, after the election. So, you know, next reorganize in, in December or November, whatever it is. Does that make sense, Rebecca? And Amy?
Yes.
Okay. And then I guess, uh, the only question I think that is left is, is the question of how does the timing of picking the next vice mayor coincide with, with David stepping down and the appointment of his replacement? And I guess, you know, who does David or does his replacement vote on that, on, on selecting that vice mayor? Have we addressed that?
I am going to have to do a little more in-depth research. The, uh, the statute about replacement is, is I, you know, I looked, I looked at it again and actually it's not well drafted. And so I'm going to need to actually read it when I'm not too busy in meeting, but I will definitely let everyone know. It, it does. The new appointment needs to be made within 60 days of the vacancy. So it sounds, I mean, so we're close in terms of the, the timing of April.
I, I, I guess one question I have is, are there anything in our rules? There's nothing in our rules procedures about if there's a vacancy in the vice mayor role, when that gets appointed, right? Because theoretically speaking, no offense, David, David almost have to be resigned. The only way there's a, there's an opening for vice mayor is if David resigns. And then the reason is replacement takes its place, correct? Theoretically?
You, you could have the vote at the next meeting to, uh, select a vice mayor and decide when that starts.
Todd, looked like.
I, I just, out of respect to everyone, I just think we're overthinking this a little bit. I think common sense would say let's wait till the new replacement takes the vice mayor's seat and then the five of you pick the next vice mayor. I mean, that's really how we operate and what we really should be doing, I would think.
Sounds good. Okay. Thank you for pulling us out of that. So then, uh, so I guess let's just have a motion then, uh, if we can on what we just said, our decision to move reorganization to the first meeting after our new November elections or after our, our new November elections are certified. And, and, you know, have reorganization in non-election years sync up with that.
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Great. Thank you.
I'm looking forward to not discussing elections. Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Six D, consideration of proposal for new senior accountant position and direction to staff regarding, one, the creation of this new position classification and an amendment to our compensation schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, this, this staff report was drafted by Finance Director Daria Carrillo and Janet Thieson, our HR manager. As we'll talk about in the next item, on really the work plan, one of the things staff has really been focused on with council over the last couple of years is when the opportunities arise to really evaluate the best way to move forward to provide our services and operation. The finance department has been blessed in a lot of ways. We've had two employees that have served us almost 20 plus years each. This specific employee, she's a, a senior analyst to position. She's been with us for over 20 years. She's retiring in September. And so with her, with her retirement, it really allowed us an opportunity to step back and think about the best way in a succession planning, operationally, the best way to proceed to support the finance team and really, you know, this forward thinking, having the skill set to really do the analysis that we're faced with, with the town moving forward. And so what Daria is asking, so I want to clarify the recommended action, we're not going to hire anyone immediately. What we're asking is that we, this is a two-meeting process. The, the pay scale is, is one of the attachments as well as the recommended job description for this new position. And so we would ask you to, to review it tonight, to approve it at the next meeting with any changes that you recommend. And then we have it on the books. And then what we're going to do is we're going to come back to you closer to the fiscal year. And we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do in a recruitment to see, because we're gonna have to fill the, the retire, the retirement position. We're going to do another recruitment and come back to council with when we actually fill this position, because there'll be a transition and, and staff will recommend an overlap. The question is, how long do we need to transition the new position from one of our employees that have served us for over 20 years? This new position would take the place of the analyst to position. The pay scale is exactly the same as the analyst to position. So from a budget standpoint, September moving forward of, of next fiscal year, it's a cost neutral decision. And what it does though, is it really brings in someone that has the traits and the skill sets to potentially be a finance director someday when Daria leaves, can fill in for Daria when she needs time off. Right now, Daria has no one to, to fill in for her. And so it really allows us to do that within the same pay infrastructure. I think Daria really outlined, as she always does in her staff reports, I can't do it justice. But she really outlined, you know, what she's thinking. I mean, she would really, you know, she's looking at about $15,000 that we have set aside for a part-time employee that we're not going to spend. And I think she is probably going to recommend in June that we bring somebody in. But again, that's going to be for another meeting for the council to consider and we'll do that analysis for you. But I'm excited about this because it, it supports Daria and it ultimately supports the town of Corder Madara, the finance department, which is one of our most critical positions. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Todd. Do we have any questions from council? If not, we'll go ahead and turn this over to the public. Any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Residents will be given three minutes apiece to make their comments. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this?
There were no emailed public comments on this item.
Thank you. And we've got no hands up, so we will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion and a possible motion. We'd like to start us off, Bob.
Daria got all of our finances onto the computer. I'm all for helping her out as much as we possibly can. I move that we go ahead and do this.
Amen. Looks like Fred seconds?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and second that. Plus I'll add, I think it's, it's good that there is a backup for her. Just, no offense, just in case you never know, but I think it's good to have a backup.
Absolutely. I think this is another step in, in, I think, Corder Madara really becoming like a, just a beautifully run town. So thank you, Todd and Daria for, for putting this together. And with that, Rebecca, we can have a vote whenever you're ready.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. That concludes our business items and brings us to item seven, council reports. And then Todd, I know you've got your, your work plan presentation. Do you want to do that now before your end slash with your, your manager report?
Sure. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I want to first thank, this isn't, this is something that we should do process-wise, as staff to council. And, and since I've been your manager since 2016, I have never given a kind of a mid-year report on how we're doing in the work plan. So I want to thank Councilmember Casissa for, you know, asking for that, uh, six weeks ago.
Workflow?
Yeah. Well, it was helpful for staff, you know, and it was a good. And so, you know, a little bit embarrassed that I haven't done this before, but this is definitely good and will add it to our procedures. You know, I, I revised, I, I sent out the staff report, you know, early afternoon, and so it is attached to the packet. I hope the council has time, has had time to look at it or you have it in front of you. I'll share my screen as well, if I can. Okay, so. So each calendar year, as we talked about in our previous discussion, the council gets together usually in April. And we talk about the workload for the, the workload for the next 12 months and beyond. And so the council has a discussion with staff. We talk about what we really want to accomplish. Council provides direction to staff. At the conclusion of that workshop in April, staff gets together, has a strategic planning session and really looks at all of our resources, what the council has directed us to do. And we come back with a recommended 12-month work plan based on our staffing and what we think we are capable of, of delivering to you. And so we did that this year. Council held the workshop on April 20th. On April 20th, the, the council gave staff really, and this is one of the greatest gifts that you've ever given staff from the stand, and I, and I talked to my cohorts. And I think they're jealous that they don't have this. This is helpful to us. This helps us. You know, as you know, things come from left and right field and you have to pivot and you have to, you have to react to things. And so this is helpful for the town manager. You broke things into three categories of priorities for us. You know, I always look at category one. If we screw up category one, we're not going to be staff much longer for the town of Corder Madara, right? We can't screw this up. This is the priority. So when anything happens in category one, you stop what you're doing and you figure it out fast. And so those are our five categories. It was obviously the, you know, we were one month into COVID, and so that was, how, what are we going to do? How are we going to recover? Fiscal sustainability, it's always at the top of the list. It's the unfunded liabilities, protecting our reoccurring revenues, controlling our costs, sharing and consolidating services when it makes sense. The new ones were climate hazards, the adaptation plan, the green building ordinance, sea level rise and flooding, the wildfire issues that we have, you know, reducing the town's carbon footprint and disaster preparedness. Communication was a new one. Strategy, protocol, website, biannual mailers, you know, just what can, how can we do a better job with communication? And then disaster per plan, disaster planning, being ready. Category two, it's always traffic and infrastructure, land use, town operations and customer service. You know, town operations and customer service internally has been a really big focus for us for the council and how to do a cybersecurity, digital services and phasing in our lower maintenance landscaping and and improving in that area. And then category three are kind of, is everything else. It's important. And when issues come up, quality of life issues, short-term rentals is an example. Another example is that, you'll see it at the next meeting, it's an amendment to the smoking ordinance, right? Wasn't on our work plan, but it came up. It's a quality of life issue. It's important to the council. It's coming back to you at the next meeting. Sustainable beautification, you know, really focusing on restoring our ecosystem and our, and planting natives in our, in our area when at all possible. And then everything else. The everything else, I'm not going to talk about. The everything else, I'm not going to talk about today. I am just going to focus on the work plan. And and what you're going to see, it's in the order of the work plan of how it was improved, how it was approved by council on June 16 of 2020. So I didn't change any of the wording. It's basically the legend in this chart is going to be greens complete with the cowboy star. In progress is is yellow or orange, and then, you know, not started yet, or we're not going to get to it is in red, and I'll talk about that. In the coming three months, this side of the fiscal year, what I'm going to do is I'm going to have staff, department by department, come back to you and give you a presentation like Ashley did in Parks and Rec and talk about the everything else, because it'll never do it justice, and I want the departments to tell their story. But you know, this work plan is only a percentage of what your staff does on really, you know, moving this town forward. And I'm just really so proud of their work. When I looked at this work plan originally in June, I thought my staff was crazy. I'm like, well, there's no way we can deliver this. And as you'll see, you know, it's just not, you know, grinding out and working for two weeks with your staff and then getting something approved. These are like multiple steps in the process to move these big projects forward that that take, you know, 12 months, 18 months worth of planning. And so I'm just really impressed with, you know, the council's vision and support, giving us the resources. You've allowed us to staff up. You've given us the financial support. You've allowed us to support ourselves when we need it. You know, and and I just, we're lucky to have this council's leadership, and it's allowed us to really do some amazing things, because I think, you know, you can only support your staff so much, but when they know the council and the community support them, have high expectations, but support them, they are just, they're attacking it, and I'm just been impressed. And so, again, category one, you can see here, and I won't go step for step. If there's anything you see, stop me, ask the question, I'm happy to answer. But it's the COVID recovery. And so one, with the COVID recovery, recovery, we had to figure out, you know, quickly, you know, how do we, how are we even going to operate? You know, we have to close town hall. We have to work from home. Do we have the technology to do that? Do we have the technology to run, you know, council meetings and all of our meetings? How do we run our government remotely or divided? We're separated now as a staff. And so really, that focused on developing the budget plan with a minimal deficit and protecting our reserve funds, and that's all Daria. Really, and and the department heads are just saying, look, we have to continue and maintain our services like we've always promised. It's that four to four years worth of work with that we've done as a team to really take the worst situation and know that we can see it through. And what I'll tell you, and I'll bring you back to March, when we talked about this in the council under your leadership, you know, when everyone else was cutting, cut, 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 freeze, 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 stop doing what you're doing, we put the pedal down and we went, we said, we're going to be okay. We believe in our process. We believe in the work we did. We're going to go attack this. And the finance team gave us that, the council, the information you needed to say, okay, you know, be conservative, but we support you. And and with that, we positioned ourselves not only as a town not to touch our reserves, but to maintain. Our fire department was in a situation where they said, hey, you know, we're, our contract is up, but we know our MOU contract is up, but we, we know you're in a crisis, like, hey, we'll talk later, you know, let's just freeze this thing right now, and we support you, and we're going to do our thing. And it allowed us to really control our cost moving forward, knowing what the end game was for this fiscal year. And so it allowed us to to really seek reimbursements, and we continue to do that. There's some good news on that front. You know, we received approximately $127,000 in the first allocation of financial support. And that was great. What was just the Biden administration, what they just moved forward, and it was just got out of one of the committees that's headed to the Senate. So we'll see how that process goes. But the town of Corder Madera is positioned to receive up to $1.2 million in the next 120 days. If that were to happen, it positions us to work with our Chamber of Commerce, Julie Kritzberger, who's been a great partner of ours, to really say, how can we, one, support the town, but take a percentage of that, potentially 25% of that, that, that's that $2.2 million potentially, and and what will keep our smaller commercial businesses in in business moving forward? So how can we support them? And so we're doing that work now to understand that, so we can bring recommendations to the council. Again, as we always have, there's a lot of rental support out there, but we'll look at how we can also support our residents when that, when that makes sense. I was talking to my cohorts about this last week, and it's something that made me really proud of this community, both of the support we had with the foundation, the Lions Club and all the others in the town, you know, we already provided 300,000 plus dollars worth of support, not knowing where we were going to be fiscally, which is much larger amount than most of our cohorts in this county. But there's more that we can do, and we may have the opportunity to provide it moving forward. So more to come on that. But then again, that's been a lot of the work with with staff and the council, working with the League of California Cities, really letting, you know, our voice be heard. And a great, great job on the Parks and Rec team of really doing that outreach, supporting our seniors and those that need help, you know, in the community. Again, I touched on the fiscal sustainability. One of the things I've been really proud about is our team with our finance ad hoc committee. We've developed a 15-year strategy on capital improvement infrastructure projects, right? That $160 million revenue stream that we have every 15 years and and that visual of how how we get it, how it comes in, where it's coming in from, and how we spend it, and the timing of how we spend it. It's a great tool. The finance subcommittee is going to continue to work on that. But we also owe you the 10-year fiscal projection. And so we've been working on that staff-wide. But we're going to share that with the ad hoc committee as well to present that to town, and that'll be the general fund side. Because as you'll see coming out of this fiscal year, the town of Corder Madera, the smaller businesses, that's where the, we need to support them. They need our help. Not all, but some do. And so we're going to help them, partnering with our chamber. But you'll see our 25, the top 25 sales tax earners, you'll see the town of Corder Madera is going to excel regionally coming out of this fiscal year and going into the next fiscal year pretty sizably. And it's going to be a positive thing for us, and it'll allow us then to really plan things moving forward. And so I'm excited about that. The other major thing that I really want to see, it's at the top here, it's develop and enhance a budget book and search and interactive capabilities. So I want it to be interactive, and I want you to be able to search. We have some great residents in town that have great questions at times. I want them to be able to search and look and be interactive with with our budget report before they have to ask a question to to be, to to have that information available to them at any time. So that is a huge, huge step moving forward over the next 12 months. I want Daria and her team to deliver that. And so that's a big priority. It's in progress now. And so our goal is to deliver that at this next budget cycle and to really start to add some of those interactive capabilities. Communication has been a big one. The mayor partnered with staff and Jen Reedy on that to really develop and analyze how we can, you know, have a more robust communications plan. You know, the climate adaptation plan is a great example. Home key is a great example. Every time you have something in this community, we're never going to do it perfect. But it's always strive for perfection, and we learn from our mistakes, and we're better next time. Don't make the same mistake twice. And so I look at these examples of of the work that we've done this past year. You can see where we've completed some of the work. We still have some work to do. We want to complete a townwide survey in the summer or partnering with our Park and Rec team on that. And we also want to provide biannual mailers and utilize technology a little bit better. So this is going to be a living process. The important thing is we have the foundation of the discussion and moving forward. The climate hazards, again, that's a big one. And you can see, you can see our efforts here. The Climate Action Plan was recently passed. And that's a big, good first step. We're currently in the Climate Adaptation Plan. We're making some amendments to that plan now, and then we'll put that back out for community engagement and comment for a 14-day period. And then we'll take that back to staff and evaluate those comments. We'll evaluate if we need to have more workshops or if it's, if we're in a place where we can take something to council to approve, you know, the cap and then come back and really do the work on the east side in Mariner Cove and Marina Village, you know, kind of reset it and start the process. We have a lot of engagement over there, and so we're going to kind of learn from the process and reengage our neighbors and and kind of develop those strategies and amend the cap at a later date. Again, this is a living document. It's a 50-year-plus document. So we're going to take our time and be thoughtful in it. But by approving the non kind of issue items within 80% of the cap, we want to approve that, receive our grant monies and and move forward. And so, you know, that's that's a big process, but that's the the blueprint moving forward of how we protect our our community. Again, I'm not going to go through all these. You can see them on the screen now. Fire safety and preparedness has been a big one for us. We've talked about it tonight. We talk about it all the time. We have Measure C monies that support that at 400 to 500,000 annually. We also have Measure F monies available to us that support us anywhere from 100 to $300,000 annually. It's a focus. And we're doing the work, you know, engage in our community that we should be doing. You'll see a lot of the the stars there. One of the things that we really need to focus on as we transition on our chipper program, you know, Marla Orth and her team over the last year had some incredible successes. And so we need to make sure that we continue that progress through the Measure, Measure C and our fire authority, you know, moving forward. But we're excited about that and what we're seeing. And so more to follow there. The one thing, we had signage and markings for all of our potential, potential evacuation routes. That's pending right now. We're kind of looking at the analysis and study from the the Measure C funds and the county fire authority on what they're doing with the evacuation study and analysis. And then what we're going to do is we're going to tie that into supporting vegetation and clearances, improving any of the evacuation routes, and then putting signage up and tying it into the evacuation alerts moving forward. And so that again is a priority this this side of the fiscal year. Flood control, storm drainage, you can see it's a big one, the climate adaptation part. It establishes priorities and goals for safeguarding our community. You have the storm drain master plan. It's something that I'm excited about. It's going to RFP in the summer of 2021. That's important, because that gives us the blueprint moving forward as we come to council again with our capital infrastructure. You can look at the plan and the timing of how we support our storm, storm drain improvements. We continue with our miscellaneous critical repairs on the flood control pump stations. One of them that we're looking at right now is the Golden Hind Eptide kind of discussion that we're having at the flood board and within the Climate Action Plan within Mariner Cove. And so we're engaging the community and staff right now with that, on seeing if there's something we can do to improve that specific location. You can also see on the multimodal transportation improvements, Public Works has been really aggressive in improving our infrastructure. The Tamil Vista Complete Streets Program between Pfeiffer and Madera Avenue have have been completed. We continue with preventive maintenance projects throughout town. The Redwood Highway Multi-Use Path is coming to completion. Parks and Recreation, the Skunk Column Mini Park Improvement. We improved our town hall, our town park bathrooms. On the environmental side, Lorena, on our admin team, has taken the lead to to partner with Public Works to help them. But there's a lot of important projects that we've been on top of, and I'm haven't always been able to say that, but we have because we have the staff and we have the expertise. But the zero-waste Marin projects, the beverage can container recycling programs, our LED lighting conversion that's about to take place. We added an EV charging station at Town Hall, and we've continued to apply for grants and evaluate our infrastructure to continue to add as many EV charging stations as we can on on town property. And so more to come on that in the next three months. Our Town Hall buildings, again, we're evaluating all of our Town Hall buildings. Sanitary District Two, again, when you improve the roads, you want to improve the infrastructure underneath. We've talked a lot about that. That continues to go. The big one was the 2020 Sewer Rehabilitation Project improvements for the sanitary district as well as the streets above. And so that was in Marina Village, Pacific Queen, Flying Cloud, Meadow Ridge, Ridge Court, and Madera Procedio. We completed about, I believe, 70% of that project, and then the rain started. And so we're going to come back early, early summer and finish that project. But that's a big one that we've, we're in the process of of completing. And again, you can just keep going down of all the sewer rehabilitation projects this past year that are in progress. Everything here is is set for construction now or in the summer by '21. And so those will go from orange to green by the end of the fiscal year. The other one that's a big one is the Sewer System Management Plan. Again, it's just like the storm drain plan. Let's get in, let's have a plan. Let's understand what the cost there. Let's understand what the priorities are. Let's come to council and and provide you that information and the financial support behind it. So you can give, you know, you can approve what you need to approve when you need to approve it. This, the sewer master plan, again, it'll go to RFP. Interviews are in progress. I'm sorry, we issued a RFP and interviews are in progress, and the master plan to complete this will take approximately two years. The other one that I'm really proud of is the district grant programs that we've allowed, that we've made available to the public for private sewer lateral assistance and lower lateral capital improvement projects, low-income private sewer laterals and loan assistance programs. So we've put that in place, and that's, that's one that staff is really proud of. Disaster preparedness, it's always readiness. I say this is in progress because it's a working document, you know, COVID really made decision-making, putting something in the manual and then training your staff on it really difficult because it changes constantly. So that's in progress. But as we come out of COVID, we'll be better for it, and we'll start to really incorporate those procedures moving forward. On the land use zoning side, the planning team has been really busy. The hotel bonus fire ordinance, the accessory dwelling units. We have the SB2 grant-funded projects on housing that is in progress. It'll go to Planning Commission in the summer of '21. You have the accessory dwelling units. Martha is working on, you know, the ADU workbook and the website calculator aimed at promoting ADU development in town. And then housing, right? Housing is going to be our big one. And so right now, we were working on revising the town's inclusionary requirements. And so that, more to come with that, and that'll be tied to the housing element as we, as we move forward. The water efficiency landscape ordinance, again, that's a big one. We want to be more efficient. One of the things staff had on the work plan is short-term rentals ordinance. And we're prepared. We have someone on contract that we're ready to start this process. You know, but staff, just with everything going on, not, not that staff can't deliver it. I just think the community, this is one of those issues that really takes a community discussion, I think. And with everything going on, we just, we want to keep the community focused on a couple of big, high-level things, engage them, get those projects done, and then come back probably next fiscal year when we talk to the council about the work plan and then and have a discussion on what we want to do with short-term rentals. But again, that's
Can I ask one question about that? That, I'm just curious, not to say that this isn't something that we should get to, but I'm just curious, is this even something that we've been having a problem with? I'm not aware of, like, you know, a big Airbnb scene in Corder Madera, and certainly not, you know, to the extent that it's causing any like routiness or or disruption. So I was just curious, you know, do you and and Mike see, you know, signs that this is a pressing issue, or is this just kind of on the level of things that we, you know, we need to get around to, but is not, you know, a pressing issue yet?
I think it's a latter of what you said. I think we probably get about two to five kind of issues a year with CNPA at night, but nothing we can't handle. It's not a top priority. It's something that can wait, too. And it's just something staff had on there that if we can get to, let's jump on it. But yeah, it's not pressing in my mind.
Thank you.
So again, the housing element, opportunity site analysis and analysis, I will begin in 2021. And it's also related to really some of the above housing items that we've talked about. That's going to be, you know, this next year, that's what we're going to be focused on, I think, as a council on, you know, how do we handle housing? And what's the best way to have that discussion? Another big one is is technology. So it's the Acela implementation. And so really, this was the overhaul of our permit tracking software for building, planning, public works in the fire department. So anyone that touched any of those departments in a permitting process, it's documented. And so really, it was something that's available to residents online, so they can see where they are in the process. They can go directly to that department and have a conversation as the, as the town manager, if someone complained and said, hey, something's not right, I could just take their address or name, and I can have the whole search history right in front of me and know what the status is. And it's supposed to make us more, you know, customer service friendly, more efficient, and it's supposed to give the information, you know, real time to a community members. So we're, we're ready to have this. We're really close to having the software be fully installed and operational. We anticipate in the coming months in the spring of '21, it'll be operational. And so that's a big one, you know. So moving forward, we're really looking forward to that one. The design review changes and modifications. You know, Adams Adams advising that we consider moving that to next year's work plan for a variety of reasons. Again, it's just where are our priorities right now as as a community? And he believes this could, this is something that could probably wait until the next fiscal year. So I'm not sure else the council feels about that, but that would be our recommendation. And then you have a lot of general zone cleanup items. And so we've been handling those as a staff. And so we've been handling those as a staff. It's in progress at the memo level. So we have the authority under these outlined commercial use categories, yards, parking, variance findings. We can do that at the staff level and that's how we've been handling that to be efficient. If there's any issues that we do have, we would obviously either take it to the planning commission or the council, depending on the process. But that's how we're, we're planning on handling some of those cleanup items, working with the town attorney. The other one is the precise plan amendments at the village and town center. And so this is one also that we recommend that we pull it off our work plan and we have a kind of a more robust conversation at the council level. You know, currently, you know, for housing, we have up to 300 housing units available at the village shopping center. Well, being that that's the, the key, you know, location to our economic vibrance. You know, there's a discussion that we should have because I think we have opportunities in the future at our commercial businesses. But how we make those amendments to the housing, to our plan moving forward, there's some discussion and thought to be had in that. I think that was the original discussion with staff and council. And I just think, you know, we're just in a whole nother world now. And I think we just need to maybe pull this back and add it to the whole conversation with some of these other items in this work plan. But it's a positive because I do, we do see some opportunity there. The Town Hall approvals was obviously a big one. And as you know, council recently approved that. And we're coming back to council with some amended items regarding that project. But again, that'll allow us to really reopen and provide the services to our community moving forward for the next 50 plus years. And so we're, we're excited about that one and really thank the council and the community, you know, for that support. And, and you know, it's not a, that's not an exciting project and we recognize it, but it's definitely a priority project for what we do. Sustainability, sustainable beautification, it's a big one. Our staff is working with the beautification committee, council members and other experts on how we can restore ecosystem systems using, you know, planting natives in our community. And so that's in progress and that'll continue to be orange because I think it's a continued effort moving forward. Training and policies has been a big one. So as you know, the council moved us into the base cities risk pool. And we share our risks for liability, workers compensation, best practices with, with 20 plus other cities and towns. Berkeley being one of them, a lot of them are in county agencies and some East Bay agencies. And so Lorena, our administrative analyst, part of our admin team is take the lead on this. And so she's our safety officer. So she built all of our COVID 19 protocols on the fly, working with HR and, and, and you know, making sure that we can come into the workplace safely. But she also handles everything, everything that relates to safety. She puts in policy, she trains everybody and she holds us all accountable to it. She has the authority over all the department heads to make decisions if it relates to safety. And I think it's been a big change for the positive moving forward. And obviously training, you know, when we went through the communications plan, we also built core values and a mission statement. Who we are as a staff and what we're trying to accomplish. And it's helpful because when we, when we fall short, sometimes you go to the mission, what's our mission? What's our core values? Where do we fall short? Why did that happen? You know, when you hire someone, core values, what are we looking for in each of our departments? Right? And so when you look at my staff, you can see it, it's clear as day what we're about. And so that's in progress. That's exciting. COVID 19 has slowed that a little bit because some of this is face to face. You know, having those tough conversations with each other, but customer service, leadership, succession planning, staff development, core values and a town mission. Is, is that's what we're going to be. That's, that's how I spend my time off to the side with my staff. That's important, you know, and, and so it's a priority. Again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just, you have the town operations, you can see here what we're working towards. Our conflict of interest code completed, the retention policy will be coming to council shortly. We're going to move the digitized town archives to probably next year. That's a big one. We just need more time. The community meetings, I just think, you know, obviously our town clerk, assistant manager Rebecca Vaughn has just killed it. I can't imagine being her and through COVID and trying to figure out how to work community meetings in this environment, but she figured it out fast. And you know, all I know, all of her cohorts, when I'm in other county meetings, they're always like Rebecca is amazing. Please thank her for what she does for not only you, but for, for us, like she gave us the model. So we're lucky to have her. So thank you for that Rebecca. Cybersecurity council, this is a big priority for council. You're expecting a report and analysis on that. It's in progress. We're working through the base cities risk pool on that. What they're going to do is they're going to evaluate the town's IT infrastructure and provide an analysis finding and recommendations. We'll take that third party analysis and bring it to council on what that is. And then we'll give rec, we'll have recommendations on what we're going to do about it, right? Because we, we know there's obviously areas that we can improve on. And so Rebecca is overseeing that process right now for us. And then again, the category three, the quality of life issues, you know, conduct community engagement survey to identify park and recreation needs. Ashley is like a breath of fresh air over there in Parks and Rec. And she's just doing her own thing with the, with the Parks and Rec Commission. We're trying to just, you know, Rebecca's overseeing her as a director. And so she's, she's there to support her administratively. And that team is just, it's going to be really exciting. You know, the work that's coming out of Parks and Rec, not only now, but over the next, next year. Really exciting that that outreach has been, again, number two has just been really, really amazing. We're continuing to restructure the organizational chart in Parks and Rec as well. First, we're going to identify like what service are we trying to provide and what do we need to provide it? How are we going to provide that? And so that's coming forward. You know, there's been some other work on benchmarking, you know, position titles and descriptions with like agencies. The big one is develop a plan to meet recreation needs in Larkspur Green Break and Field Residence. Ashley's already completed that analysis. Now you just need someone else to play ball and, 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 you know, join us and deliver that service side by side. A couple of things that were
Can I jump in again real fast? Three B there, is that related to? I know there have been discussions of potentially examining down the road, whether it would make sense to consolidate Parks Direct Departments with, with Larkspur. Is that kind of tied to that discussion?
Yes, that is exactly what's tied to it.
Fantastic.
And so we asked Rebecca to, Rebecca, I'm sorry, Rebecca with Ashley to, to work with their cohorts in Larkspur to develop a plan and what that would look like. And so that's what they're doing now. And then the managers are also talking as, as we move forward. So that, that is an absolute priority. You have two red marks, that's four A, four B. Again, we are looking at adding classroom space, possibly a modular. We are looking at installing a restroom behind the community center. We stopped that. The, the commission is restarting and it's really exciting. They're doing great work. But restarting kind of some master planning that they've done before and kind of updating that. And what's their vision? And again, instead of like mosh poshing and saying, we want to do this project and then stop and then go left. They're, you know, they're developing the infrastructure of priorities for, for the council to ultimately consider moving forward. And so we're going to stop four A and four B and really focus on five. We're going to do the master planning projects for town park and all of our projects, all of our parks. And then again, we're also our, our senior, you know, our senior and active adult programs. It's a big focus. Ashley's been doing a great job with that. And again, staff, I think, has been doing just, this is an incredible work plan. But they're also just doing a lot of work outside of this. And I, if I had another hour, I would show you each of the slides, but I want this, the department heads to tell you the story one by one over the next three months in a presentation. And so with that, I'll just stop there. But I was actually pretty impressed through this, you know, we talked about it with the mayor and the council and what we've been able to accomplish. I'm really pleased what we've accomplished as a council and staff through COVID. It's pretty remarkable. Yeah.
That is great. Thanks so much, Todd. I think since this was a presentation item, we should probably do our normal council questions and then public comment before we pivot fully to council and manager reports. So do we have any questions from the council for Todd on this fantastic work plan update? Yeah, Bob.
Yeah, Todd, do you guys need anything else to do? Or do you have enough? Just kidding.
Yeah, Fred.
Yeah, I was going to ask you when you guys sleep or when you get downtime.
Yeah, I think that's been my goal too, of making sure everyone has a second. Everyone has someone that supports them underneath them. They can take time off. And the council has clearly supported that. And that's my, you know, that's my goal. I need to make sure that happens for all of them. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think that we all see you, you and the staff as kind of, you know, Corder Madera's secret weapon. And so we definitely want to make sure that, you know, we're really impressed with, with the way that you guys are really keeping the pedal to the metal, but we, we don't want anyone to burn out. So just that's the only thing, but thank you so much. Any other questions before we open this up to the public? If not, we will go ahead and open this up for public comments. So if you'd like to comment on Todd's presentation, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments about this item?
No, we did not receive any email public comments.
Great. And I'm not seeing any hands up. So we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for any closing thoughts. Anybody have anything they want to share? Yeah, Fred.
Yeah, I just, I'm sure a lot of people do it. Just want to acknowledge Todd, you, Rebecca and your entire staff. When you put this work plan down, you start looking at what you've accomplished. I mean, it's truly amazing. It really is. So just kudos to all of you and the entire staff. Great job.
Thank you.
Amen to that. And thanks again, Fred, for, for suggesting that we have this presentation. I think that was really helpful. Great. With that, we can move on now. Todd, did you have anything else that you wanted to report on for your manager report? Or should we just go to?
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, sweet. Council reports then. We will start with you, Fred.
Yeah, there's a couple of things. When I attended, there was an El Camino Traffic Calming Workshop. That was, I think, a couple of weeks or so ago. Just a bit of background, last year, there were a few residents on El Camino that were complaining about people speeding, especially in the morning and afternoon to the schools up there. RJ got together with CNPA, who actually collected some data. CNPA also put out some extra patrols to try to catch some speeders. RJ went out and got a traffic study done. So basically what the workshop was is presenting similar ideas about how to slow down traffic on that street. Anything that will be done, it won't be done, I believe, for another year or so because that street's going to go through a complete streets effort. I think in, I can't remember if it's this year, late this year or early next year. I can't remember. But I think it was really well done because a lot of the residents were able to provide input, what they want to see as far as crosswalks, middle crosswalks and that kind of stuff. So I think it went really well. I also attended, I'm sorry, I want to think RJ is supposed to come back to the, the working group in, I think, May or so with a little bit more concrete concept. I attended MCC MC Economic Recovery Committee. I also attended the Casa Buena, I AKA Project Home Key Communication Subcommittee. Two things that came out of that is we did talk about trying to do a, a grand opening type thing. It's kind of difficult to do given COVID. So instead we pivoted and what we're going to do is do, there's going to be any four or five short videos about 30 seconds each. Representative from Marin County, some of our community members also, that'll be put together, has kind of like a grand opening type presentation or welcome type thing. One other thing on that project also is that residents are supposed to, hopefully will be moving in next week. And there will be, I think, 50% occupancy there. And then I also attended the Flood Control Board meeting. And again, a lot of discussion around the cap. So that's it.
Great. Thank you, Fred. Charles.
Nothing to report.
Great. Thank you, Charles. Bob.
We had a central Marin Fire Meeting and a police council meeting. We had audits in both meetings, no real issues, nothing else to report. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, David.
I attended both the workshop of the Sea Level Rise Group on the Climate Adaptation Plan and also the Hillside's Group. I think we've already discussed how town and, and the project team is adjusting our approach and slowing down and, and listening more. My New Year's resolution is, resolution is to listen more. And I also attended the Tech Committee of MCE Clean Energy. It was a long committee meeting with a number of new initiatives and, and really quite innovative things are, are coming forward. One of those is a green hydrogen pilot project. If you create hydrogen fuel from an electrolysis process that uses renewable energy, you've got a green production of something whose only byproduct is clean water instead of what we're normally producing in our tailpipes. And also a potential biomass project is, is being solicited. And looking at all of the pros and cons of the use of biomass in the generation of energy. New goals for the year, including some cost reductions. And MCE is, although there was a bump last August when there was the extraordinary heat and outages and fires all around. MC was hit to the tune of about $10 million. They're nevertheless going to come out ahead. And the, the coming budget for the coming year looks as though we're going to be able to add to reserves as much as 15% of the total annual budget as, and at the same time, offer about 5% of the total annual budget as subsidies to very needy customers who could during these COVID times use some support on their utility bill. At the end of the year, MC signed its biggest power purchase agreement ever with the Little Bear solar facility in Fresno, California, 160 megawatts, enough to service and provide energy for 65,000 homes. It's the largest project that they've ever signed on to. And there's some other fun things that are going forward. And you guys are going to have to decide who gets involved in this fun in the next, next few months after I, I pull out. Also got vaccinated on Sunday, first one. That's it.
Thank you, David. A lot of cool stuff going on at MCE, it sounds like. And that would be just me left. The only things that I did that were not already reported on. The League North Bay Division, we had the first of our kind of series of meetings with all of the state and hopefully federal legislators who represent the North Bay Division. So we met with Senator McGuire, our senator. That was a great discussion, obviously focused a lot on housing, especially with the Rena numbers coming out. So we're hoping to keep that dialogue open going forward. And then our next meeting with a legislator is going to be with Senator Dodd, who represents, I'm pretty sure, like the other half of Sonoma and possibly I want to say Solano County up in that area. But I think it's going to be a, you know, similar discussion, again, just trying to work on, you know, how we can sort of manage the, the housing mandates coming down from the state. CMSA, Central Insanitation Agency, everything's going smoothly. They've just begun their next five year strategic plan. The only thing I want to highlight there is just that the agency is doing, I think, a really impressive job of, of kind of seeing itself not just as, you know, an agency that treats waste, but actually as a resource recovery agency that takes waste and takes contaminated water and actually turns it into clean water or renewable energy for the county. So I think that's, you know, really exciting. Wanted to share that. The only other thing, the one thing that's kind of out of the ordinary is the Reed Union School District Board invited me to participate in a little like interview with their consultant who's helping them interview candidates for, for their next superintendent. So I guess their superintendent is departing, they're looking for a new one. I was thinking that this could be an opportunity for us to potentially try to address the weird school district boundaries. Basically, the Granada neighborhood of Corder Madera in East Corder Madera is in Reed Union School District, which provides a lot of great tax revenue for the Reed Union School District, but is a pain in the butt for families in Corder Madera who live in that neighborhood when they live, you know, a five minute walk from Cove School. And yet they have to schlep their kids all the way around Paradise Drive to Tiburon to go to school. I think that's something that keeps popping up over, you know, again and again, is, is families in that neighborhood saying, why, why the heck can't our kids go to Cove School? We can transfer some of them, but, but, you know, I think a lot of families try to get transfers into Larkspur Corder Madera School District and can't. I still need to check in with our superintendent, Dr. Geithman, on, you know, just making sure that we have the capacity. If we were able to adjust the boundaries there and making sure that that's something that he would support and that our school district would support. But I just thought I would put that on your guys' radar because I thought it was interesting. And, and, you know, fingers crossed, it may be a rare opportunity to solve one of these weird little kind of vestigial problems from a past era. So that is all I've got. With that, any comments on our draft agenda for the next meeting? Then we're going to adjourn to our SD two meeting. So there is more tonight. We've got the sanitary district meeting. I think it's just a consent calendar. So we're going to call to order the Tuesday, February 16th, meeting of the Sanitary District Two Board of Directors. Rebecca, could we have a roll call, please?
Board member, Cesar.
Here.
Board member Lee. Board member Avasia.
Here.
Board Vice President Kuhnheart.
Present.
Board President Becker.
Here, thank you. We'll wave the salute to the flag because we did that for the last meeting. Open time for public comment. This is an opportunity for any of our residents on the line to comment on any items not on our agenda. Folks will have three minutes apiece to make any comments. If you'd like to comment on something, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments for SD two open time?
No, we did not receive any email public comments.
Great, thank you. And our residents are dropping like flies. No hands up here. So we will close open time. There are no presentations, which brings us to the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require further discussion. Any member of the board, staff or the public may pull an item for further discussion. Would any members of the board like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, would any members of the public like to pull any items from the consent calendar? We are not having any hands go up. We'll bring it back to the board for a motion on the consent calendar. Fred.
Yeah, go ahead and make the motion to approve the consent calendar items for A through four C.
Second.
Already, thank you guys.
Board member Casissa.
Yes.
Board member Lee.
Yes.
Board member Avasia.
Yes.
Board Vice President Kuhnheart.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. We have no public hearings, no business items. Is there a district manager report?
No.
Great. Any, any board member reports?
Well.
All right. Any, any comments on our draft agenda for the next meeting? And if not, we adjourn for the night.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
All right, guys. Have a good night.
Night. Thank you.